Thank you so much for your patience as we begin. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Today is Monday, March 6th, 2023. The time is 6:05 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Maldonado.
President.
Councilmember Bucelado.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here, again? Did you not hear me?
No, I didn't hear you.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Cortez. She is going to be ill this evening. Councilmember Kristin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza. Correct me. And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open our first call to the public. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak at this time? Please go ahead if you're online and raise your hand emoji. And closing our first call to the public. Item six, we have presentations. First, we have our town manager, Mr. Russ Martin, and he will be taking his oath of office this evening with Ms. Garcia.
I, Russ Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of town manager.
Of town manager.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to be removing item B, and it will be placed upon a future agenda. Item C, we have a presentation by Mike Ingram, the CEO of Eldorado Holdings Incorporated.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Eldorado Holdings, we'd like to say just a little bit about where we've been, what we've been involved in. And I've asked, actually, at the time that this request was done, I was the CEO. But I've now got a new CEO, it's Jim Kenny. And Jim Kenny's been with Eldorado all the time. And he's now the CEO, and Chris Grogan will be making part of this presentation with me. He's the president of the company. So with that, and then also Brad Hinton is with us. And I know some of your staff is very well acquainted with Brad. They worked with him, they both worked in the city of Maricopa for a good many years, since Chris was there and Brad was there in Maricopa. And let me just say, to be the very first day here for us and before this council, to be here with our new manager. Now, Lisa, you've been here 28 years in this deal, so you've got a lot of history. And we spent a little bit of time this afternoon with some of you, just trying to figure out what your vision is for the town of Florence. What do you think your number one thing would be that we could add into? What can we be of help, trying to get you from here to there? And I think as we go through some of this presentation, you'll see a little bit of some of the things. When I first, go ahead and hit that. If you look at the town of Maricopa, the people that were landowners down there, who are the major farmers in that area, said they'd been working on that road. It's a county road from Interstate 10 to Interstate 8. And they said they wanted to buy me lunch and wanted to know if, since I'd bought some land down in that western Pinal County area, if I would be interested in taking over that project of trying to help get that road improved. And so I spent 10 years of my life getting State Route 347, sometimes known as the John Wayne Parkway. Yes, we do own the John Wayne Red River Ranch. And the Eldorado Ranch, John Wayne owned those properties for 42 years. We've owned them for about 38 years. And that's in western Pinal County. It's just west of Stanfield. And surrounded Stanfield is Eldorado. And then Red River is just about due south of the town of Maricopa. So I did, I spent 10 years on that endeavor to get that road put together. And infrastructure's always been a major part of our development. And it was because of that effort, when I was doing that, there was a secretary at ADOT that was named Mary Peters. Now, Mary Peters went on to be the Assistant Director of ADOT, and then under five assignments, she was made the director. When George W. Bush came to office, he made her the Federal Highways Administrator in her first term. And then in his second term, he made her and vaged her to Secretary of Transportation for the US. So it was during that timeframe that I, you know, stayed in close contact with Secretary Peters. And she was coming back home at the end of George Bush's term. And she said, you know, you create 30,000 jobs for every $1 billion spent on infrastructure. And she said, it's been in the books for almost 35 years to connect Phoenix with Las Vegas. And would you think about taking over that project and do it? She said, now, it's a dollar a year job, but I think you can get it done. So with the help of another developer that's in this area named Stacy Brimhall, we incorporated the I-11 Coalition. I went to Senator McCain and Senator Kyle, John Kyle, and told them about Secretary Peters' idea. They didn't want any part of it because they was afraid it'd be considered an earmark. So we were very, very disappointed to hear that, that the two senators from the state of Arizona weren't interested in connecting Phoenix with Las Vegas. So we went to see the, help me. In.
Harry Reid.
Harry Reid, Harry Reid, Senator at Lighthouse. So Mary Peters and I talked about it, and he said, oh, it's a great idea. We should connect these two cities. The only two cities in the nation of over a million each that aren't connected by interstate is Las Vegas and Phoenix. You've got four major sports teams, you've got Mayo Clinic, you've got Barrows Neurological Hospital. We're the entertainment capital of the world. Let's go to work on it. So upon starting to work on that, then it was too long that Barbara Boxer, US Senator from California, called and said she was going to be in Phoenix for some meetings, wanted to come see me, that Senator Reid had told her about this interstate. Well, Senator Reid had told her that we're connecting Phoenix with Las Vegas, hopefully. And we called this Interstate 11. And a lot of people wanted to know where we ever come up with that name. And I guess I'll go to my grave to know. But we never did tell them where that name come from, but it stuck. And anyhow, the, at that time, you know, she wanted to extend the road all the way to Seattle. And we said, we're really confused why California senators in my office wanting to run a new freeway from, really Mexico, all the way to Seattle. She said, Interstate 5 is so highly congested on the west coast. If you could get another north-south freeway, it would take a lot of pressure off I-5. So from that, we had two senators really working hard. It became a political issue. The Republicans then decided that they needed to sign off on the Keystone Pipeline, and they tried to fight Interstate 11 for quite a while. But in the end, we won the deal. And it was finally awarded, Congress made from Wickenburg, Arizona to Las Vegas Interstate 11 the designation. Today, you can drive Interstate 11 from Las Vegas to the Arizona border. That part is open. The new interstate from Wickenburg to Casa Grande, the Tier 1, has finished. And then as we saw that we were probably going to be coming into the Florence area, Jim Kenny and our whole team started working with our state legislature to get funds put in place for the Tier 2 study, not only for Interstate 11, but for the north-south freeway and for the widening of I-10. And that was in the budget that Governor Ducey signed. So we were meeting with ADOT earlier today. The RFP has been extended from Arizona Farms, as you probably know, up to 60. That part of Tier 2 has begun. The part from Arizona Farms, south to Eloy, will soon be awarded. They're working on the request for proposals for that part of it. So in talking to several of you, I did find out today that infrastructure is a main part of your goal. You want to see better infrastructure put, and that's always been a part of our goal. And, you know, I did go to WP Carey School of Management at Arizona State University and told them that I'd been told by the secretary that you create 30,000 jobs. Could they confirm that? And WP Carey School of Management said, sir, we use 34,000 jobs in our modeling. So I do believe that if you're working on infrastructure, you're going to be creating a lot of jobs. So that's also very good. And so as we start in with what has been known as Merrill Ranch, it may be a different name as we get into marketing. We'll see what, as I told several of you then, I told Lisa, I'm open for new ideas for a title and name. And, Mr. Manager, that goes for you. We're really, really excited that we could be starting here the first day, it's your first day and our first time before this council. That's kind of exciting news for us. So we want to wish you the very best luck. But you'll see here in the year 2000, the town of Maricopa was about less than 500 people on the 2000 census. It was not incorporated, it was in the, is in the Pinal County, western Pinal County. We assembled that acreage up there in the north. We assembled about 18,000 acres altogether in western Pinal County at that time. And as we went through the county for zoning, they did not require curb and gutters, landscape, asphalt, streets, sidewalks, signage. There was nothing in the stipulations about streetlights, amenities. In fact, a lot of the home builders that we were dealing with said they wanted to do carports. They said, the only way we're going to do this and make this go is some price. It's going to be priced alone. And if you think about it, we could have done composition roofs. We could have done roof-mounted air conditioning, as some of the builders thought we should. We could have done chip sealed. If you look at Arizona City, that is exactly the stipulations the county required in Arizona City, south of Casa Grande. And if you see what we built, we self-imposed the exact same standards that you saw in Chandler and Phoenix. We adopted them into our plans. So a builder coming in, so you can see the difference from what was allowed there. You don't see a lot of things as far as vegetation requirements and everything. But we adopted the same thing for, the very first project was Rancho El Dorado and the golf course community that was put together there. So, you know, it's, here's a picture of the first five holes of the golf course in 2002, and the lots that are developed. I'd sold 1,100 lots to six home builders. Now, if you'll notice, the wastewater treatment facility is complete. The water company's there, because Maricopa had no wastewater. They had no water system. Everything was on either well or septic. So we had to do that. But in getting this off the ground, we also had trouble getting Cox to bring us cable television. They said, this will never go. Everyone that I talked to said, Maricopa will be a big flop. You'll never sell a lot down there until Casa Grande is built out. They have doctors, they have car dealers, they have shopping centers, they have dentists. You have a Circle K without a gas pump. You have no gas station. You come across 15 miles of Gila River in a community with no services, and you don't have any gas stations there. You have no doctors, you have no anything except the Circle K and the bar and restaurant. And I was just completely running into headwobbles every place we turned. And I told her, you know, if Cox won't bring us cable, we'll form our own cable company. The darkest day of my life is when Arizona Public Service told me they wouldn't bring us electricity unless we put up $50 million upfront. So we went to Edison out of California and formed a whole new electrical utility company. And we did that with ED3, Electrical District 3. We formed a new electrical district there. And it's about that time that Quest was not going to bring us fiber optics. When they saw the new electrical company formation, they quickly called and said, we're on our way with fiber optics. Don't do the phone company. So the only thing we didn't have to do was the phone company. So it was a real challenge. But there's 2002, to the top of that map is Phoenix. Now you're looking back to the south, the same thing. Those first five holes are on the right side. The little town of Maricopa is right below there in the right center of the map. The rest of the golf course is now completed, and we're grading that. Here's a picture in 2006. As you can see, Frye's Shopping Center is now open, and so is Bash's. And the lots are really starting to fill in. By 2014, you know, we were up over 50,000 people. And today, we're with Walmart there and with Banner Health there, Central Arizona College, the new City Hall and new libraries up, and the Ockian Harris is in place with their new things. Things are off to a great start in Maricopa. And I've got to say, we're very proud of the town there. And I think we're going to be just as proud to be working in Florence. In fact, at one time, when we were at the dedication of the new City Hall, the person's then mayor, you may have removed that person, mayor, I'm not sure, but he came up to me and said, how, when are you going to come to Florence? We'd love to have you in Florence. So now it's been four or five years since that happened. But let me say, we're really happy to be in Florence and to be a part of it. Because the thing that we've done in Maricopa is similar to what we've done at Chandler, working with Chandler, with Queen Creek and Gilbert with many developments. We've developed over 100,000 lots, residential lots. The only thing we build higher than the curb is that, the homes for rent. We've got about 1,000 of those going right to there in some form of development. So we are, we're a major partner with the major home builders in the nation. And they're our partners. And we've had a chance to, you know, partner with the different municipalities that we've worked with, try to find out where they're at, what their goals are, and try to join in with them. So Chris, I'm going to step aside and let you take it from here.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Chris Grogan, President of Eldorado Holdings, just wanted to show a couple of follow-up slides to show some of the standards that we hold ourselves to at Eldorado Holdings that Mike has put together since the late 80s. This is the newest development coming to Maricopa. You can see Eagle Shadow there, beautiful entryway, lots of vegetation, as you saw at the Duke. This is the amenity park. The water system there is part of water reclamation we come back and use for our landscaping and public spaces. There's a grand pool inside the public park as well, part of the HOA. There's another view of it. So Bella Vista Farms, we are your neighbor to the north in Pinal County right now. At Bella Vista Farms, we've got two of our phases under construction, a little over 1,200 lots. This is a view of the park that has just been completed, and you could go visit it today, right across from Supervisor Goodman's office, the public library there. We're building SNAP Road from Bella Vista Farms up to Skyline Road as well. So that regional connectivity is a very big thing for development as a whole. And it's our goal always to make sure that these projects can be circulated well. This is a picture of the pool inside the park. There's going to be about five of these parks throughout our development there. This is about 1,500 acres. Mike mentioned that we are building higher than a curb in one facet. That's multifamily build-for-rent projects. We have three floor plans. These are mostly duplexes, but they are standalone as well. So what you see in the top right screen there is a duplex, one-bedroom unit attached to a one-bedroom. The floor plan is the bottom left there. Our three bedrooms are all standalone. Our two bedrooms can connect to a two-bedroom as well as a one-bedroom. So we've got a couple of different floor plans there. But our goal with this, this project is open in Queen Creek right now at Signal Butte and Acateal, was to really create a more luxurious living situation for a renter by choice. So in the bottom right there, you can see our kitchen is a full kitchen. It also has a dining room table in there. So all of our two and three bedrooms have room for a dining room table, something that we believe separates us. But even more so than that, you can see in the back there, behind the dining room table, a barn door. That sliding door goes to the picture that's just above it, into the washroom. So washer-dryer laundry room in all of our units. You can also see in the center on the bottom there, there's a walk-in closet. Every master has two sinks. If it's a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, one of them will have a tub. But if it's just a one-bedroom, it's just a walk-in shower. So we're trying to create that single-family living opportunity in more of a rental lock-and-leave. The backyard, as shown in the top right, there's nothing there that needs to be maintained. And then the front yard, shown over in the left center there, that's all maintained by us, the owners of the facility for the renters. So very easy to control. We've got three of these under construction right now. We've got another three in planning. And it's something we plan on talking with and working with your staff about, if this would be a fit for our new 4,100 acres there at Merrill Ranch. So that's another view of how those turned out to come. Merrill Ranch, we will be working with staff and have already started. Just to introduce the project that we inherited, it is on the screen right now. And you can tell one major thing is missing here, something that we're very excited about, as Mike was talking about, the north-south freeway. That regional connectivity really, in our opinion, links this whole region and what's going to be a big driver for employment as well as future sustainability for housing and overall functionality. So we're already starting to look at this property as, how best do you go in and tweak the land plan from a regional standpoint to make sure that we're connecting properly with the north-south? We're driving circulation throughout the entire unit? And one thing that we're very excited about, even though we just closed on this property December 20th of last year, you can see the purple area there. Some of that transportation circulate over on top comes from the fact that that purple area is about 150 acres. And we're in discussions right now with a large retailer developer that came to us and is looking to put the next large retail development in this area. And they really think between what Polte's got, what we've got now, and where the north-south connects everything, they want to be in the center there somewhere. And so that starts our early discussion of, if I go back a slide, you'll see again that most of the retail was down here on Felix Road, which would connect to Attaway. Obviously, that gives you connectivity to the south over the Gila River. But with the north-south moving that, there's been discussion of, okay, how do we reimagine this? And it's going to take a little bit of time and working with your staff. But if we bring retail up from Felix Road up to a north-south in Merrill Ranch Parkway, that residential that was there could potentially move down to the south where the new wastewater treatment plant is that we're currently working on designing with Wilson Engineers and Polte Homes. And then the employment in residential that was there could potentially move to more of an employment center on Felix Road, which now has that connectivity that this area southeast of Felix and Hunt Highway lost in a little bit of the fact that the north-south will cut it off. And you've got a solar field now just to the west of it. So a lot of early planning, but we wanted to just introduce ourselves, introduce a little bit of the discussion today and make sure you saw a little bit of the quality that we hope to bring to this project. And we're really excited to be part of Florence. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Council, did you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, I actually worked out in Maricopa for just under a year. And so I've seen that community grow during even that, my tenure there. And I've seen the standards of the homes out there. And I know that the homeowners that I've worked with out there, they always loved the community feel that was given to all of those developments. So I'm really happy that you guys are in town. I feel that you can translate that vision into reality very effectively. So I do have some questions, obviously, in the weeds about the slides, but we can certainly talk through that as each division comes before us. But I'm very happy to have you here, so thank you so much.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to come down, meet with us as well prior, and present at the meeting for everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven is our consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of Resolution Number 1861-23. Where did you need to? Okay. It was that we removed item B for future presentation. Item A is approval of Resolution Number 1861-23. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, pertaining to the submission of projects for consideration in Arizona's 2024 Highway Seat Plan. Thank you. Item B, approval of Resolution Number 1862-23, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT 5310, Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Grant Program, which provides funding to service the elderly and persons with disabilities in the community. And item C, approval of the November 7th, December 8th, 2022, January 9th, 12th, 17th, and February 6th, 12th, and 22nd, 2023, Town Council Meeting Minutes. And just a correction, Vice Mayor, what was that? Instead of the 12th, it should have been the 21st. That being said, does anybody need any item removed? Seeing no such motion, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, unfinished business. Ordinance Number 722-23. This is the second reading discussion approval-disapproval to an adoptent ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, establishing minimum standards for regulating and governing all existing properties, buildings, and structures to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, providing for condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for occupation and use, demolition of such structures in the Town of Florence, Arizona, amending Section 150.300, technical codes adopted by adding International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition, providing for separability and providing for an effective date of April 1st, 2023. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, this item is a, was on your agenda at the last meeting. You adopted the resolution, which adopted it by reference, and we held our first reading. This item is merely to be able to have the 2018 set of tools to be in our toolbox. We went over it last year. Harvey is not at this meeting. And so we're just asking for council to adopt this so that we have this on file.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing then, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8A as read. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is authorization to suspend the Town of Florence Special Event Vendor Permit Rules for the Road to Country Thunder Event to allow the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to coordinate vendors and collect vendor fees as well as a fundraiser during the Road to Country Thunder Event on April 8th, 2023. to Country Thunder Event on April 8th, 2023. Mr. Roger Beatty, the chamber director, is with us this evening. He did receive some questions that were out there and he did respond, but I'd just like to invite you up if you'd like to add anything verbally this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I don't think I have much to add. You guys asked some questions that were very good. I just wanted to clarify that this is open to all businesses of Florence. The, one of the questions that you did ask was if we reach out to all businesses, and to be honest, we don't reach out to every single business because we don't have contacts for every business, but we do promote it as much as possible through our social media and every channel that we have. We do not, we do not turn away any, any vendors for Country Thunder, and we welcome whether you're a member of the chamber or not to come and participate in this great event for the town. I think that one other question referred to something about avoiding, having any problems for the other businesses. I think I work with Ally and maybe Bebo a little bit on the placement of all the vendors so that there's very little things that are in front of businesses or would affect them to do their normal business during an event like this. Because things like this and the car show and other, some of the home tour is something that our small businesses thrive on and it's something that they depend on during, throughout the year to make, to make their money. But I'm open to any other questions also. You guys asked about nonprofits. I just wanted to clarify that we never have charged even in any of our events, whether it's Third Friday, whether it's car shows, whether it's anything, anybody that's listening on, if you ever are nonprofit and want to participate in one of the events in Florence, we do, we've never charged for that. Currently, the price structure for Road to Country Thunder, if we do get it, is, and Sherry's over my back, so if she, if I'm wrong, she'll come up and punch me. I believe it's $30 for members and $40 for non-members for regular vendors. And then for food trucks, it's 75 for members and 100 for non-members. Yeah, team. All right, I did well. So, but any other questions, please? Let me.
One other question I appreciate that you answered is, it was what was the purpose of the fundraiser and how are the funds used? And I'm just going to read the response that you shared because I feel that it is important and it communicates well, and I want to share it with everybody who's listening.
Thank you.
Funds that are earned from the event will go directly back into the community by way of advertisement, marketing, and more events. In the last three years, the chamber has received grants in the amount of just under 300,000 that have promoted Third Fridays, created a tourism website, purchased tables and umbrellas for Main Street, produced tourism videos, and much more. Profits from this event will help the chamber continue to promote our town and bring people to our businesses.
Thank you.
Which we've been working really hard to be a tourist destination and it's shows through in our events and collaboration.
We're trying our best, and there's lots of, lots of groups in Florence that are doing some great things, including the Florence Music Festival that's happening this weekend. So lots of fun things to do in Florence.
Excellent. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right. With that, we need a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine, new business, discussion approval disapproval to authorize staff to post a notice of intention to increase property tax rates on the town website. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Counsel. This is our annual approach to council in regards to primary and secondary property taxes. Anytime that you're going to increase the levy over the prior year, it's required that you post a notice of intent. That does not, this agenda item does not mean that we are proposing to intent at this time or, sorry, that we are proposing to increase at this time. It means that we're just going to post the notification. You will get an agenda item later on with selections and proposed levies that you can peruse and decide which one that you would like to levy based upon our available revenues. We haven't recommended anything as of yet because we do not have our state shared numbers. But in comparison, the maximum allowable levy from the levy limit worksheet that Penile County sent to you and I have delivered is $1,513,139. Last year, we levied $1,386,500. Our levy rate itself has dropped slightly, about .55. So in regards to this, we, we are proposing notification, and we also have two slids that are coming on board, slid number eight and slid number nine, that we're proposing to levy the maximum allowable just to get it established on the Penile County tax rolls. So this is a statutory requirement. It's required before we levy anything to post this notification.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? All right, seeing no motion, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 9A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. Item 10, manager's report.
So this is my time, but I generally don't have a formal report. That will change into the near future. Today's my first day, so thank you. Staff's been great to kind of get me acclimated and, and I've got a chance to kind of walk around and get to see things. I've got all week here doing tours and different things, so it'll be good. And then ironically, on Thursday is the appreciation for the staff, and so an opportunity for me to meet a whole lot of them on Thursday. So I'm looking forward to that. I will say again, last Thursday night, just thank you to the chamber for hosting a meet and greet. That was a great opportunity for me to kind of just get slowly into the, the process, and I appreciate that. Appreciate the council's patience in getting me here, and it was kind of a nice little event. Got a little bit of wine and candy. Who could argue that that's a good way to get started here? So I appreciate those local businesses. And then again, I'm, you know, my wife, Ann, and I are honored to be citizens. We live here in town. We are living in a nice rental unit right now, and we've put our house for sale. So ultimately, we intend on making that full move down here in that, in the next few months, hopefully with a sale of a home and the opportunity for us to then look to purchase in this next year. So again, we're excited to be a part of the whole system, and when you see me or otherwise, say hi, citizens and otherwise. And again, maybe the final opportunity or the first opportunity, maybe the final opportunity to say thank you to the interim manager who has spent the better part of over a year now working on your behalf and the citizens' behalf. I can tell you, just in the first few hours here and over the time that, that she and I have talked, leading up to today, you're in, in good, good shape, and it makes it really easy for me to come in the first day and not have to make decisions and do things when you've got her and the staff really just already doing well. So again, very honored to be here and appreciate the opportunity you all gave me. So thank you.
Thank you. Department reports. Did any member of council have any question for any of the department heads? All right. Item number 12 is our second call to the public. If anybody's in person and you want to speak, just come up to the podium. If you're online, go ahead and raise your hand. I do see Mrs. Sherry Har. If you want to go ahead and unmute her.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Hello.
Sherry Har, born and raised in Florence, Arizona. Just wanted to welcome Mr. Martin to our town, and I wish you the very best. He has some great competition, so we have high expectations of you and hope that you're going to bring a lot to our town. We're looking forward to working with you. Secondly, I know that Curtis has been out for a while, and just wanted to shout out to Mr. Murdock, I think is his name. Let me see, what is his name? Derek Maddox. Sorry, I apologize for mispronouncing his name. Derek Maddox, he's been acting interim with a lot of the things on See Click Fix. There's been so much movement since Mr. Maddox has been in interim. So highly encourage you all to look at that. He's said more in the two, three weeks since Curtis has been gone than Curtis has done the last six years, and that's something that I've dealt with directly, so it's not third party or second party hearing. But again, just wanted to bring that to your attention and a big shout out because we do appreciate all of his hard work. Thanks again, everybody, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jo Ruiz.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, thank you for taking my comments this evening. I'd also like to extend a very warm welcome to our new town manager. Looking very forward to meeting you further and also working with you. On the subject of carnivals, Madam Mayor, you read a post that I had posted recently on Facebook, and you had a couple of comments there, and you said you would go ahead and ask about what the logistics were about having and bringing a carnival to town. So I just wanted to remind you of that because there are several families and community members here in Florence that are chomping at the bit to actually have a carnival brought our way because it's been, I don't know if the right date was in 2015 or 2019, you would know best, and just looking forward to that. So just wanted to remind you of that, Madam Mayor, and hopefully we can find out how to get this done. I did send an email to Lisa on March 2nd, and I haven't heard back from her yet, so I'm still wondering, you know, how, how do we go about getting a carnival here into town? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do have my notes, and I'll be speaking at call to the council. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? All right. Closing the second call to the council, or public, oh goodness gracious, call to the public. First call to the council, Councilmember Maldonado.
I just want to say I had a great time at Florence High School last, last week, watching the kids perform that Charlie Brown play. We have a lot of talent in, in our high school. So if you guys get a chance to go see it, just check it out. Car show, great job on the car show. I remember my first car show here and how much it's grown since then, and I look forward to next year. And it, it was phenomenal. So many cars, so many people, and we were blessed with a, with a beautiful day, so I can't wait for next year. And then I'd like to thank Mayor Thompson from Coolidge and the Town Council for inviting us to Coolidge Cotton Days. I got to talk to some of the, some of the folks from Coolidge and some of our state representatives while I was out there eating lunch with them on Saturday. So it was pretty neat. We talked about some stuff. And of course, we talked about some of the, the traffic woes on Addaway. So just be patient. This is according to the town manager, that even though it's been shut down for, it's going to be shut down for four weeks on Addaway, that it actually might be less than that. So there's good news. So thank you.
Councilmember Kristen.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for, at least to Lisa, for everything that you've done for this past over a year. I know you're counting down the days. You could probably correct us as to how long it's been, but how long you've been in this position. And I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work and dedication to not just the community, but to us as a council. It's not easy to wrangle all of our voices together and make us unified and help us get our points across and make us all feel validated and heard, but you somehow managed to do that during your entire tenure. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come together as a council and as a community and by, and being that stronghold for all of us. So also I wanted to extend my warm welcome to Russ. Thank you so much for coming to our town and with such a gleeful heart. I hear that every single time I talk to you, you're so excited about the new things you're learning about the Town of Florence and getting the opportunity and taking the opportunity to get to know our community members. So I had fun getting to see you at the car show and getting to meet your wife. She seems like she's so much fun, and I'm excited to get to know her better as well. So I just wanted to say thank you and welcome to the community.
Councilmember Neil.
Just wanted to welcome Russell to Florence. Lisa, you're an absolute beast. It's funny, but it ain't. That's real talk. Lisa, she knows she the GOAT, she know. Lisa, you took the reins and did it, did it moving, so very big ups to you, Lisa. I went to the Town Awards hosted by Mr. Beatty. It was very good, very cool. A lot of people got some great awards, really deserved it. It was a great experience. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have. Thank y'all.
Councilmember Bushelado.
I also want to welcome Mr. Martin to town. If you need anything, you know how to get ahold of us, and I know we're all more than willing to help you and get you settled. Also to Lisa, you've done a great job, and I appreciate all you did for us, especially during a campaign year, doing double duty. You always answered our questions, and you've always been a phone call away, so I also wanted to say thank you for all that you've done. And then I just wanted to say in general, the town has had some really amazing events. I missed last week's events because I was battling four day off and on migraine, so this weather's been a little crazy. But I wanted to say congrats to all the business owners that, you know, got an award and especially Harold. And I just wanted to say that our town is known for being welcoming and hosting such great, big, grand events for being such a small town. And I just wanted to say, you know, good job to all the people that make that possible here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I do want to welcome you to your new job. We're going to put you to work real soon, so be prepared. Lisa, you are an amazing person. You do so much for this town, and then when you're tired and can't do anymore, you do You're an inspiration. I, I hope that I can only do half as much as what you do for this town. As far as the events that we've been having, you know, one of my biggest complaints when I first started was that it seemed like we were a separated community, and I, I feel like we're starting to become a lot closer in all aspects, and, and that's exciting to me. With, with all the growth that we have coming, I can't, I can't wait to see what happens next. Thank you guys both.
All right. So I have five or six items on my list. The first was some residents did reach out because it was Coolidge Days this weekend over in Coolidge, and they always have a carnival and such. And I know Allison Fleas worked very hard a few years back and brought a carnival over to Heritage Park, and they had asked, what is the likelihood of something like that happening again? And I did say that I would bring it up at a meeting to plant a seed, just to gather some information. I do recall one of the struggles we experienced was participation. So I did want to, you know, just say that. I also wanted to remind everybody that we do have our nonprofit grants for events. Somebody else had mentioned, you know, like the Mardi Gras event and the Cinco de Mayo and other events that used to occur in the Town of Florence and how that there is funding available for nonprofits who would like to apply if they would choose to continue and want to bring those events back. In regards to the transportation and the road closure. In regards to the transportation and the road closure, I, it took about forty-five minutes to get to the meeting tonight on what typically is only a fifteen-minute commute. I'm anticipating about an hour, maybe two-hour drive home depending on traffic with only, oh absolutely, one, one lane going that way. It was backed all the way up to Main Street. And, you know, I really do wish that our neighboring community would have either worked with, you know, their, the ARPA funding or how they were structuring their project and the timing, added another lane. We did communicate that in a letter to them and, you know, at this time, we have the process that we have, so I just want to urge everybody to take your time, drive safely. I do appreciate the message that our local school district has been putting out. They've been emphasizing safety over schedule, so I think that that's important is just take your time. It's more important to arrive, arrive alive and be safe. In regards to our town manager, I want to say welcome. We're very excited that you're here and I know with the event that we had, we've had some residents that have reached out and they said, can you tell us more about him? And I see our, our local newspaper in the audience as well as participating virtually. And Ms. Garcia did put together a nice intro and I just want to share it for a moment so everybody hears your experience that you're bringing to the table. Russ Martin has over twenty-five years of local government experience in a variety of areas that have led to now nineteen years as a town manager. His work experiences include working as a regional planner in central Utah for six county associate, associations of governor as, and as a planner in human resources in midterm. He then started as a town manager in Hayden, Colorado, and most recently as a town manager in Camp Verde, Arizona. During these positions, he accomplished many goals set out by the elected officials he worked for and completed by the great professionals he had working with him in these positions. Russ has a bachelor's degree in the city and regional planning from New Mexico State University and a master's degree in human resources management from Utah State University. He however, is most proud of his family, which includes his wife, Ann, and his grown children. He has a son, Michael, who attends Yavapai College and a daughter, McKenna, who attends ASU. He's dedicated his life to serving the communities he has lived in and looks forward to the personal connections he makes while serving. So, thank you very much. We're fortunate to have you and we are looking forward to working with you. And last on my list, I also wanted to add a congratulations to all of the business and community awards winners. I was not feeling well last week, so I was not able to attend, but I was there in spirit and I'm very proud. We do have an executive session this evening, so we are going to adjourn at this time to receive legal advice on contract matters. At this time, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.